Trustees' Regular Meeting, Tuesday, May 5th, 2020, at 12 noon, LeRue County Stand. Bishop, would you be the honors?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Deputy Clerk.
Public hearing, at 12 noon, being held to consider receiving funds through the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance, Justice Assistant Grant Program Local Solicitation being the coronavirus emergency supplemental funding in a sum of $96,891. But first, I'd like to open up the meeting. Trustee Johnson?
Here.
Trustee Hobbs?
Here.
Trustee Daniels?
Here.
Trustee Renfro?
Present.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
And the public hearing starts now. Now.
Okay. Mike, anybody who'd like to speak, this is the afternoon do ceremony. I think it's self-explanatory, but we do have the Assistant Chief here if you have any questions. All right, let's entertain a motion to have the hearing closed.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yeah.
Trustee Hobbs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Get down.
Thank you. I don't even think it was a minute.
She doesn't take minutes.
And while she's lining up, I'm Charlene, would you like to come forward?
Wait, I'm sorry. Do you want to keep track of the entire meeting since we have the transcript anyway?
Yes, if you want to.
She's going to transcribe before.
Hold on.
May I have your report? I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
Jennifer.
We would normally send an etape. Would you say to transcribe the entire meeting?
Sure, it would be easier.
Thank you.
Just give me one second because I just hit to get out. So just give me one second to reopen it.
As you like that, Chief.
Sounds good. Those are the questions I can handle.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
We're just waiting. The stenographer is going to stay to do the meeting completely, so that's what we were waiting for. So now we're going to get started. We would have our Commissioner, Charlene Thompson, from the Community Development Agency to give her a report.
May I approach?
Please.
Can I sign my hands to the floor?
Thank you. If you hand me two, I'll bet you down.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Ryan and trustees.
Good afternoon.
I just wanted to come before you today to give a report on some of the activities that the CDA has undertaken in light of the COVID crisis and some additional federal grant monies that we have applied for, as well as some rapid response initiatives that we have given emergency funding to support. And so this is an outline of the activities we've done. The first, if you go to page two, it says COVID Response Funding Priorities. As part of the conversations with the County of Nassau, they asked us to develop a list of priorities for the village should additional funding roll down. And these are the 10 priorities that we identified, starting with public services, including the Salvation Army being able to provide emergency assistance for housing security as well as food security. Seniors, we identified early on that our seniors are in dire need of additional support. I did share that with the mayor and the village attorney, and they worked with, not only with our Housing Authority, as well as other community agencies to provide a supplement of support to our seniors, particularly those seniors who are homebound, are in crisis, not being able to get food assistance. And so I will share a little bit more with you as to how the CDA has stepped up to try to mobilize volunteers and public services to assist those homebound seniors. Additionally, workforce stabilization, we are finding ways to do training remotely, as well as gearing up for when we do open up again, to make sure we can rapidly get as many of our residents back to work as soon as possible by supporting businesses and, again, accessing federal funds as they become available. We also have a $200,000 grant through the New York State Department of Labor. We've completed Phase One, and once we complete Phase One, we've been invited to complete Phase Two. It's just a matter of providing additional documentation. I actually serve on the Regional Committee to review the grants as they come in for the state, for our region, and the practice is, once we complete the documents for Phase Two, funding is then let within about four to six weeks thereafter. Additionally, we are looking to provide assistance, not only for our homeowners who may be in a pre-foreclosure crisis due to COVID and loss of income, as well as renters. And so we are using, we've applied for community development block grant money to provide one month's grant for whether it be a mortgage assistance or rental assistance. We also have to keep in mind that there may be some fair housing issues that arise for people who, for example, if an individual within an apartment building tests positive, there are fair housing protections in place, whereas the landlord cannot share the status of any individual who has been exposed or tested positive within housing. And so we have seen an increase in fair housing violations, and we're working with the Nassau County to report those as they may come in and make sure that our residents are protected. I've already spoken about job training and re-increase of this support. One thing unfortunately that we have identified, in addition to health disparities, we see many people of African descent, as well people of Hispanic and Latino descent, have been severely impacted, disproportionately impacted by this crisis. So we have an ongoing community partnership with Northwell Health. We've reached out to our community partners, saying that we stand ready to assist, and not only identifying the underlying conditions and what we can do as a community to help mitigate those underlying conditions, but also when people are seeking testing and treatment, we've seen a disparity with the health services that they have been provided. And we are documenting that as well. People are being turned away for testing. People are being turned away for care when they show up ill, disproportionately so in our communities. And that's another thing that we'll be tracking and working with Northwell Health to try to make sure that we mitigate those circumstances going forward in the future.
So, and how are you tracking? People are coming to you?
People are reporting. People are coming to us asking for help and reporting to us, as well as we do surveys within the community through our Community Empowerment Resource Center. We constantly touch base with our community-based partners and understand what's going on, boots on the ground, whether people are, a particular senior is in need of food assistance, or someone is not getting the healthcare they needed. And we are using our networks to provide additional support as we can.
So, and that information is critical.
Yes.
This is the first time I'm hearing of any sort of survey or information gathering as of this. I've never heard of this. How long have you been doing it?
We've been doing it since, you know, the CDA never stopped working. We've had our...
No, I'm talking about specifically for this coronavirus. You said that people are going to be tested and being turned away. How long have you been gathering this information?
So, within the last three weeks, we have been. For, we've done survey of our public services organizations to see those organizations that actually provide different kinds of public service resources to our community members. We've constantly been in touch with them and trying to get real-time information as to when they need help or additional support, and also gathering anecdotal information to see how we might be able to assist people. We have a social media campaign. For example, when we found out that the site, testing site in Hempstead was going to be open, we did a social media blitz to share that information through our networks via email, as well as our social Instagram and Facebook, as well as our, well, Instagram and Facebook is priority.
I think, I think my focus is more on people as being turned away from getting tested.
Yes.
You said you've been doing this for three weeks. Have you shared that information with the mayor and trustees on this?
No, what we've been doing is just providing information and resources as to where they might go to get additional help, and often making calls on their behalf.
And I think it's good, you know, getting that information, but it would be better and helpful if it was shared with us, the policymakers, the decision makers, to have the resources to make sure that this is the case, we're addressing it. I don't, you know, it's, it's good, a good gesture, but it's not helpful if we're not getting this information.
So I'll make sure that we include, I do inform the mayor, for example, when we had the issue with the people, seniors not getting food that they needed.
No, I'm not talking about food.
I understand.
My focus is on one thing.
Trustee Hobbs, I do understand, and I will do so going forward. I will make sure I do so.
Okay, but have you passed that information on to the mayor, as far as the numbers of people that have reportedly been turned away from being tested?
Well, it's only been individuals here and there. It hasn't been any major trend, and we've just helped them through referral services. I have not, and we've been able to resolve their issues.
All right. So again, we're, we're in a, in a public forum.
Yes.
In the village meeting, which is on Facebook Live.
Yes.
And in your statement, you made a statement that it appeared as if the numbers, to me the way you was talking, is a disparity number, but, you know, we have not received this information, and I don't want the community hearing this and thinking that we're not doing anything about it because we're not getting this information.
Well, if I may?
Sure. That's why we're here.
So there are two things that I'd like to share with you. Whenever we get the information, we absolutely take immediate action to try to resolve whatever issue is presented with us through our networks as available. And most often, we're able to resolve them and get the individuals the information that they need. And we have not been able to not get them the information. That's why we did not, we didn't escalate it to the mayor, because we were able to resolve the problem, boots on the ground. And, but when we have not been able to, for example, with the food, we have reached out to the mayor and the village attorney to share that information. The, the instances where people have complained to us about not being able to get access to testing or health services have been minimal coming to us, but there's a larger anecdotal information that we have seen reported throughout the community.
Okay. Again, I'm just going based on your original statement.
I understand.
And I think that, you know, the information was a little confusing to me because if we have, which we don't, you know, based on what you have so far, but if there was a large number of people that are not being tested with the number of people in the Hempstead community that's testing positive, I think that's something that we need to address. And again, no matter how many numbers, that's information that should have been shared to us right away.
Originally, it was an issue, but it was resolved once the county set up the testing site here in Hempstead. And we were in conversations with getting that information and getting it out to the community. So the issue has been addressed through the mayor cooperating with the county, et cetera, to bringing those resources to the village directly. But going forward, should we get any other reports, I will be sure to report to the mayor and share with the trustees.
You will report to the mayor and also share the information with the trustees?
That's exactly what, that's exactly what I said. Yes.
I'm just, you know, because we've had this discussion before about making sure that we get information, because when you make reports in the past, and when we have questions, the only reason we have questions, because we don't get this information until the first of the month.
So I have tried to be diligent about following up. I do listen to the virtual meetings. I have listened to them and followed up with emails and reports, et cetera. And, and that's why I chose to be here today, to make my presentation in person, so that if any questions arise, I can be right here to answer them in real time. And that's why I came out today. But if there's any past information, I have shared forwarded emails to the trustees, as well as my reports directly to the trustees, and encourage you all, if you have any questions based upon the reports I have submitted. I am very responsive via email, and I know anything that I've reported and that has been an issue that I've seen here at the village board meeting, I have followed up accordingly and provided additional information directly to each trustee.
Right, reactive, I'm actually, we can proactively.
And that's why I'm here today.
Well, you're missing a point.
No, I understand.
Thank you.
I do understand. May I go on?
Yes.
And so, on the next page, you will see, we did get an emergency request on April 30th from the Salvation Army. Again, we do a survey of all the local food pantries within our database to see if they, number one, are operational, and number two, if they have enough food, and number three, if they're reaching the populations in need. When we did our initial survey, we found that many of the food pantries are staffed by senior citizens, and because they are most vulnerable population, they were not being able to man the food pantries. The Salvation Army never stopped serving, but they had a very long, like a seven-day waiting list. And so what we did is, we encouraged them to submit an emergency request for funding, and we were able to coordinate additional volunteers. They were only serving two days a week, so we were able to provide a grant of $5,000 and coordinate volunteers for them to expand to four days a week and to eliminate that backlog of the list. And revised plan is being implemented as of this week. Additionally, next, what we've done is try to, we have been working closely with the Village of Hempstead Chamber of Commerce to identify which businesses are currently open, what their needs are, and how we can help support them. We find that most of the businesses are food eateries, and so we did a social media campaign to encourage people to be able to order locally and safely. And so we did a survey of all the local businesses that are still in operation, asking them if they wanted to participate in this social media campaign. Got their logo, their hours of operation, their methodologies of how food can be ordered, whether it be curbside pickup, or through Uber Eats, or those other delivery services. We have had several businesses sign up, and I have a sample here of what, I have the survey behind, and then a sample of one of the businesses, Galilee Zelli, who listed their hours of operation. There, a lot of the eateries have a truncated menu, what their menus are, how you can order, and how you can pay. And, and so we have a sample here for you of the social media campaign that we have already launched. We are working very closely with the Chamber of Commerce, not only on businesses that are still open, but looking to them to help us, once businesses start to reopen, go around and identify the needs of the business owners, so we can help them get fully up to speed as quickly as possible. And we are partnering with the Chamber of Commerce actively and providing grant support for them to get the equipment and the additional staff to do this. And we have developed a full-blown business rapid recovery plan, and we will utilize some of the stimulus money to help our businesses get back up to speed as quickly as possible. So I'd like to share with you now, a little bit more about the funding that's being made available through the county, through the Community Development Block Grant Program, as well as the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, which is HUD Source Funding. Nassau County received a supplemental allocation of $8,525,000 in community development block grant funding, which is about half their annual allocation. And so we looked at all the projects. When I did my last round of application for the next normal funding year, I reached out to each department head and asked them to give me a list of all their projects that were to be prioritized for community development block grant funding. Of course, we did not have enough money to fund all of the projects, but I was able to go back to that list to make a list of supplemental projects that we would fund under this stimulus money. And if you see, we have a list of CDVG, CD stands for, is the abbreviation that the county is using for the stimulus money. We have a table of all the grant funding that we put in for. Because Hempstead has been so hard-hit in Nassau County, we said, ask for everything. Ask for as much as we could, and we know that this is only the first round of funding. New York will get a second allocation, because we are one of the hardest-hit states within the United States. And so if things are not funded this round, we anticipate we'll be able to get them funded in the next round. So I'd just like to walk through really quickly.
I'm sorry, we, we do have trustee Daniels to ask.
I did send it via email.
No, no, I'm talking about...
He has a meeting at one.
Yeah, he's texting me now. Yeah, he has a meeting at one.
So I should, should I just leave it?
Yeah, you can hear. And, and we have, we have a copy of the report.
You do, yes.
It's very thorough. But we do have a couple other things on the agenda that we have to take care of, and we, one of our trustees already informed us that.
But you, of course, are available if there are questions after.
I do, and there's just one last thing that I'd like to say before I take my seat.
Sure.
We are also looking at alternative measures to do census outreach. As you all know, making sure that we have an accurate and full count of our census numbers is imperative for the amount of funding we get through the federal government. And so we are doing a social media campaign and involving our youth to do TikTok challenges and other innovative ways to encourage their families to fill out their census forms. I am available for questions via email or phone call, and I'm working very hard to get as much as we can.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do have one question. It's really, really quick to you. Thank you outside the meeting, not attached at all. Just as the CDA as the lead agency in the downtown redevelopment zone?
Yes.
Are you, are you familiar with the consulting contract that's on the agenda for today?
I did not see the agenda for today, I'm sorry.
Excuse me?
I did not see the agenda for today. I am preliminarily familiar with it, but I have not looked at the final version.
So is it, so the CDA board hasn't, hasn't signed off or approved this agreement?
No, I'm not sure that we have that. I don't believe that falls under our purview for this consulting agreement. I don't know.
It's basically giving the consultant the ability to negotiate with the master developer, but yet the CDA is the lead agency behind the implementation and execution of the master developer agreement. So, okay, so you haven't seen it as yet?
I've seen drafts, and I was asked to comment on the drafts. I have not seen the final version. I have been in consultation, the village attorney did reach out to me to apprise me of the consultant that the village was seeking to bring on board, and I stand ready and able, once they are, if they are approved and brought on board, to work with them in whatever capacity I need to, to make sure the village's needs are met.
So when, as part of this agreement, it says that the consultant is going to prepare and implement a downtown plan. Has there been any subsequent planning done that we are not familiar with, that we aren't implementing, or are you now handing over the, as the lead agency, you're handing over the development preparation and subsequent implementation of the downtown plan to this third-party consultant?
So let me share with you what the CDA has already done and is in the midst of doing. Number one, we just...
Can you just get that new question? You can ask it, we have, have...
We're not handing over anything. That's the answer you were asked, that's the answer to the question that you've asked me.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We're going to go to item number three. Resolved that upon the recommendation of Samantha Fountain, Deputy Village Clerk. The Board of Trustees hereby waives the reading of the minutes, regular meeting on April 20th, 2020, public hearings and special meeting of April 28th, 2020, and accept them as reviewed. Trustee Daniels, you're muted.
Sorry, I'll move it, but I have a question or one correction.
It's been moved in second, you can question.
Question is, I just, I recall this, the HPD, the delivery of the bus, accepting that, I didn't vote no to that. I voted yes. I think it's passed me down as no.
Okay.
So I've amended, I'll move it, I've amended.
Okay.
Okay.
Was it, who was the, who was the move?
The minutes. Trustee Daniels had moved it second, was trustee Renfro?
No, trustee Renfro, he made the motion, I seconded. And that was the question, and his question was...
He actually said it, I'm here, I saw him, but that's okay.
So can, can you just amend your motion with the necessary corrections?
I amend my motion with the necessary directions, and there is some.
Okay.
I second.
Okay. Trustee Johnson?
Yeah.
Trustee Hobbs?
Yes.
Trustee Daniels?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Clerk wishes to report that Mayor Ryan and Deputy Mayor Renfro have approved the miscellaneous business license as reviewed. Item number five. Resolved that upon the recommendation of Mayor Don Ryan. The Board of Trustees approves the Village of Hempstead to enter into an agreement with the Garner Group LLC, having its principal office at 1225 Franklin Avenue, Suite 325, Garden City, New York, 11530, and Glenn L. Spiritus, having his principal office at 6.7-B Oceanfront, Long Beach, New York, 11561, as a project planning and development consultant.
So moved.
I gave you all the updated agreement from...
I had the ready. Yes.
From Aunt Madame. Attorney? Trustee Daniels, you got the email for the new updated contract? I emailed it to you yesterday.
Correct, I see that, I see that.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Sorry. Question, question.
Is there a term on this agreement? I don't think I have the revised version.
The term is in paragraph one, I believe.
It's in term in paragraph one. I'll email it over to you, Joe.
It's in the old version as well.
It's in the old version?
For 12 months, okay. And is the payment due every month?
Wait a minute.
No.
I have a question. He's over.
The amended, the amended one tells for the payment, though.
Who have you?
Adam Joe, and that trustee Hobbs has a question.
We have a motion, second, on the question. Trustee Hobbs.
My question is, why are we choosing to bring this group on now? And as relates to development, $15,000, when with this coronavirus, we don't know what financial hardship is going to place on the village moving forward, as far as our employees, we're in the middle of contract negotiation, and, and to spend $15,000 now, it really doesn't make any sense to me, when we're talking about looking towards development. The second thing is, that if, if the village itself just initiated, which I didn't go for, but that we can pursue a lawsuit against the developer, so how are we spending money to sue the developer, and at the same token, hiring somebody to help push the development? I'm, I'm just confused on the thinking of bringing this consultant group on now. Not only that, when, because of the coronavirus... Not only that, when, because of the coronavirus, we're not really having meetings the way we would normally have it, where our community could come in and ask questions. And I'm sure this is a topic that we would get tons of questions and have input from the residents. Why are we doing this now? It's been stated over and over, Mayor, that, you know, you said that you're against development of apartments with pilots. But yet, we know for a fact in public forums that one of the principals in this agency have said that the only way you can do development is with pilots. I'm confused. We're sending mixed signals. We have our CDA director who's here, who specializes in giving us all the information we need, she does her homework, but yet, she said that she had an opportunity to go over the draft but never got the final. Again, what are we doing? Why are we pushing this now? That's my question.
It appears one of the reasons certainly would be that the downtown development activity has been stalled. We're hoping perhaps with two people who are expert in this particular area, no two people ever more so than Mayor Garner and Dr. Spiritus, an opportunity to sit down may have some positive impact. You did emphasize the fifteen thousand dollars on signing agreement. I think half early, the other half late, which is, in my opinion, reasonable if we can get an improved tax base and we can create some type of movement which would have significant full-time jobs for our residents. This is a direction that we're going that we have not in the past. So it's new territory, but it's also hopeful territory.
So how does this play in with, again, when you have made a motion and it was carried through passing of a vote, to go about seeing if we can bring a lawsuit?
I think that would try to create some action. We got a bit, not as much as we want. And this may be a little bit more of an impetus in the direction we all want to go, which is the development of that area.
Wait, do you have another?
Just let us know when it happens.
What's going on? Wait, okay.
I'm sorry, you don't go, okay. This Zoom meeting that the treasurers and trustee Daniels are on is set for a timer. So when it ends, we're gonna just have to lock them back in. Because it only has a limit of forty minutes.
Okay, so we don't have much time.
We're gonna have to upgrade our, well, we're gonna have to just upgrade our system. But it ends in forty minutes.
In any case, trustee has asked a question. Are there other questions that need to be answered?
Well, we can't see now until it gets back to.
No, he's on, he's on. He's on one minute.
Okay.
So I have a question about the fifteen hundred.
Fifteen thousand, nine hundred.
I mean fifteen thousand, sorry. We're not laying that money out up front. It's seven thousand five hundred, when, and when is the other seventy-five? What's the plan?
Seventy-five hundred at signing, and then the balance at the completion, which is when there's a memorandum of understanding between the parties.
Is there a set time for that?
Anywhere within a year.
Within a year, okay.
The entire expense under this contract is fifteen thousand?
Correct.
Is it my turn? I don't know if they finished answering.
Yeah.
Yes, trustee Daniels.
I guess I got a couple of comments and then obviously some questions. You know, what I would say first would be, you know, to me, this is really an indication of an administration that does not understand what they're doing. Been critical of this agreement in the past, and now trying to use it and implement it is a little bit outrageous, in my opinion. The notion of inserting someone into the middle to do what basically we could do on our own, that is, bring them to the table and have a conversation, which quite frankly, the mayor has stated time and time again that he's been doing and had that conversation and initiated a lawsuit. So this, so I'll just leave that for what it is. I'd ask, where did the drafting of this contract come from? Was this drafted in-house or externally?
The original proposal came from the consultants.
A document that's in front of us today?
Yeah, and then it was vetted back and forth.
So is this our work, or is this our agreement, or has it?
No, it's their agreement, and then we vetted it back and forth. So they made the proposal, and then we made the changes.
So, so just really quickly, one, before we start considering we have questions about the agreement, but one, while the agreement does state, and the mayor has just stated that they are out there doing this consulting work, I think we all should be reminded, and I'm quite sure the mayor's been on the board for a number of years, is reminded, of 100 Main Street. And how much the 100 Main Street transaction cost this village in CDBG money going forward? And I was orchestrated by the same two individuals that's here today. And if you want more insight in that, one only has to look at the closing statement for a ten million dollar hunt loan, supported by the village, that, you know, that undertaken, that cost us CDBG money, millions of dollars for many, many years. But now we're right back to where we started again. As it relates to the document, there's a lot of confusion in the document. First, and not pointing fingers or anything, anyone, but on the resolution side, the resolution states that we are cooperating with Garner Group LLC, but we hope that the actual project planning agreement states that it's going to be with a joint venture. Has that joint venture been formed? Are we putting to the organization documents associated with this joint venture? So we know who we are, how the party in this agreement is? Would be my first question.
So Glenn Spiritus said that he's going to be assigning his right to a corporation at a later date, which he'll provide that information to us once it is. Right now, this agreement is between him as an individual and then the Garner Group.
But it says a joint venture of the two. A joint venture implies that it is something that binds them two together?
No, it just implies that the two of them are working together. It doesn't imply a partnership.
So then, but the resolution says it's the grant, so we pay Garner and then Glenn gets money on the side?
The resolution says the Garner Group and Glenn Spiritus. I missed your question, I'm sorry.
Well, the resolution says the grant, it's asked for a pool to go with Garner Group.
I'm reading. We may have different documents, but the resolution says, resolve that upon the recommendation of Mayor Don Ryan, the Board of Trustees approves the Village of Hempstead to enter into an agreement with the Garner Group, having its principal place of business at 1225 Franklin Avenue, Suite 325, Garden City, New York, 11530, and Glenn L. Spiritus, Ph.D., having his principal office at 617-B Oceanfront, Long Beach, New York, 11561, as project planning and development consultant. Is that, does yours read that?
No, I did not have that.
Okay. There must be a mistake somewhere then. But that's the resolution that Samantha just read.
Let's keep the agenda headed, Joe. The header for the item in the agenda.
Well, the actual resolution that I got in my agenda didn't say that. It said just the Garner Group, so I got an old version.
Okay.
I only have the original version.
That's Joe Gill talking, I don't know if you can understand that.
Second question would be, when you read the actual planning and development consulting agreement, we're being asked, if you look at the now, therefore section of it, the last sentence in there says, the consulting contract will include but not be limited to the following.
Wait, wait, what are you reading? I'm sorry. I'm at the now, therefore section, but which, are you looking at paragraph?
No, the same paragraph, the last sentence. Says the consulting contract will include but not be limited.
Which number is it?
Okay, got it.
Where is it?
He's looking at the last, on page.
Of the agreement.
Two of the agreement. The paragraph that begins now, therefore.
If this is the agreement, how can we know what's in the agreement? It's not going to be limited by anything else if this is the agreement, is that?
Yes. Okay, at this time, we're gonna have to invite back in the mayor, I mean trustee Daniels, Joe Gill, our village treasurer, our deputy village treasurer, and Charlene Thompson, our executive director of CDA, because the Zoom only allows us to do forty minutes, so we're gonna invite them back into the meeting.
Okay, I'm a little concerned, though. You seem to be suggesting that there's two agendas.
Wait, 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 trustee, we just had to stop the record for a second to get trustee Daniels again. Yeah, all right.
Well, my question can be off the record.
No, 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 you can't have an off the record question, right?
Go ahead.
The way there was a pay, a payroll where you didn't have to pay for it. Now they, clearly they lost it. And there was no limit.
Forty minutes is not enough time.
No, this just changed.
It was always not enough time.
No, before there was no limit.
I don't like to be rushed, pal, but I'm trying to do village business, okay?
Is there any way we can get the people who are on the computer?
Yeah, he's doing that right now. He's a couple of people on here.
You would like to see their face, right?
Not only that, it's really hard to see.
Listen, honestly.
You want to speak, you want to see?
Because when you see their face, you're a lip reader.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
It does, although the mask.
Yeah, they want to have masks on at home.
But yeah, it's just very low.
A little bit.
I'm struggling.
Is there a delay on live?
There is.
Just a slight delay.
Does anybody know when the pet boards, when that shopping center, whatever you want to call it, when that was finished, or yeah? No idea? Home Depot, anybody know, but yeah, that was completed?
Completed?
Yes.
Hey, I'm on.
Okay, it only, the Zoom only allows forty minutes, sorry about that.
That's all right, if you were probably in here, so I appreciate your efforts. So, hey, this is just not, it's.
Trustee Daniels, if you can just wait one moment, please? We're gonna put you on another TV.
The monitor?
The monitor?
Yeah, that would also.
It's not.
Thank you, sir.
He said that's scary.
Oh, that's Joe.
So if you could, yeah, let everybody see. That's trustee Daniels, man.
Yeah, I know. It makes it easier because.
Yeah, it's too late.
One notch, can you turn it around?
Turn it all the way around, yeah. All the way around?
All the way around?
That, that's, I mean, I don't know.
Can you see it?
Yeah, I can see it.
It's a little shade on it now, it was a little clearer before, but.
Okay.
Please, I'm going.
Yeah, same.
Thank you.
You know, we're just waiting for Joe.
We're just waiting for Joe Gill. Tell Joe to.
Oh, thank you.
Show you some content.
What is his last name? Gill, G-I-L-L?
Yes, Joe.
Yes, that's correct.
And then you also have Gary Woo, W-O-O.
Is he on the microphone?
Yes, but Gary is not on the camera, he's not speaking, only Joe is speaking.
Okay.
Oh, but Gary's there now. Yeah.
Yeah, because I didn't know there were two different people speaking.
Gary Woo.
We can continue, right? Because Gary is on, we don't need the treasurers for this part.
No.
Okay, we can continue. And trustee Daniels, there was a question that he had, that he was getting, he was in the middle of asking.
Yes, so relation to this, again, it just seems a little bit all over the place, in all respects. I mean, I don't understand the scope of it. On first page, under the one, two, three, fourth, whereas, it's basically saying consideration of the stalled development activity, which, you know, we can point fingers as why it stalled, saying that now we want someone to revise, someone to review, and make recommendations on contracts, planning documents, zoning documents necessary to assist the village in gaining redevelopment starting. Then you go down another two, whereas it's sort of fifth, or four, or five, or six, whereas the last sentence says that they want to get it done in a manner that most benefits residents of the village. Well, you know, this has already been determined by both of the Board of Trustees in the past. There have been numerous visionings, public hearings, et cetera. So now we're gonna scrap all of that and say that these two individuals are gonna decide what's in the best manner for the village. I don't understand it. Again, but that goes into scope. But what's really, really troubling is, is yet another scope of services is outlined for compensation, which at the end of the day, forget everything else, really that's all that matters, right? So in the compensation section, it's saying that they're going to prepare and implement a downtown plan, including but not limited to taking all steps necessary to represent the municipality's interest with respect to the MDA, and successfully negotiate an MOU between the master developer and the municipality as it relates to the consultant's role in project plan.
I think that there's, trustee, I think that there may be another issue with the document that you have. Two A reads, consultant shall be paid a fee of fifteen thousand dollars upon signing of this agreement to take all steps necessary to represent the municipality's interests with respect to the MDA and the successful negotiation and completion of a MOU between the master developer and the municipality regarding, one, the consultant's role in project planning, and, two, the village's goals with respect to the downtown redevelopment. The section about the implementation, that is, shouldn't be in your document, if you have that.
Well, I have everything including that in my document, it's not crossed out, so it seems to be a lot of different documents circulating there. But let's just say we're going off what you just, what you just read.
Okay.
I have a problem paying somebody fifteen thousand dollars to negotiate how they get into a deal.
Okay.
That's what it's basically reading, that we're gonna pay fifteen thousand dollars for the consultant to come up with an MOU as to what the consultant's role in the project will be. Who does that? Why are we paying fifteen thousand dollars for someone to figure out how they're gonna be involved in the transaction? You should do that for free. That makes absolutely no sense. It's embarrassing. It's absolutely embarrassing. We're going to pay fifteen thousand dollars for the consultant to figure out what their role in the project will be. And you wonder why we are in the position we are in. And the consultant should be paid an additional seventy-five hundred upon the signing of the agreement for bugging a marrow, for waking up in the morning, here goes seventy-five hundred bucks. And then here goes another seventy-five hundred dollars when you can figure out how you can pitch yourself into a deal. This is incompetent. It's absolutely ridiculous. It is literally. It is literally three or four different agreements pulled together into one, like a tossed salad. You wonder why there's no correction, no, no plan, why we're now hiring past administrations to do what we should be able to do by ourselves. Here goes fifteen thousand dollars to go figure out how you can be a consultant in a pre-arranged deal. That is utterly ridiculous. Yet, it still outlines another four scopes throughout the agreement. Not once does it mention anything about conflicts of interest, when just the last meeting, one of the individuals represented themselves as a lobbyist for someone to get a pilot, and they did. Now, that same individual is back, and because the individual is who he is, and who they are, and who they're connected with, they're gonna get fifteen thousand dollars to figure out how they can go make some more money. And that's what gets put on our agenda. And you wonder why we're so close to the cap. And you wonder why we haven't raised any new tax receipts. And you wonder why we should add any expenses and taxes keep going up. This is disgusting, everybody should be embarrassed, should be embarrassed. I know I am, and I had nothing to do with it. Absolutely makes no sense. Fifteen thousand dollars to go figure out how you get yourself into a deal. You should be ashamed of yourself. And the residents should be ashamed of that motive for you. It's ridiculous.
Anybody else have a comment?
Yeah, I would just like.
I think, I think trustee Johnson was waiting, because we passed on the mic.
Okay, sure. Go ahead, trustee Johnson.
I would, uh, trustee Hogg speak first.
No, go ahead.
No, I want you to speak first.
Okay, thank you. I just wanna say, again, my, my question is, why are we doing this now? Why does it seem like there's a rush to do it now, when we are in a situation where we are already bordering on reaching the cap? Not only that, we don't know what financial hardship this virus, people being out of work, is gonna cause us down the road that we have this money to spend. We're in the, in the process of, again, negotiating contracts for employees. We have employees that's been on the garbage truck, um, out there being essential workers, who've been asking us to consider them, and we're saying, we're gonna toe the line, we're not gonna do anything for you, but we have fifteen thousand dollars to spend on this, ridiculous. And then also, with this whole agreement, it's changed in a week, I've got three or four different copies of this. It's like it's been paced together, I don't understand this. From the first one I got, to, when, when was the correction, the newest one said, Clark, was that yesterday?
Yes.
Yeah, and this is, this is crazy, it's like we're making it up as we go, I'm finished.
Trustee Johnson?
Joe Gill has joined the meeting, our village treasurer.
Okay, trustee Johnson has the.
Yeah, I have a few things to say. As a village resident for forty-eight years, forty-eight long years, and at least almost twenty years without any type of development being, going on for the last twenty years, everyone that's watching, everyone that's sitting at the dais, the few people that's in the audience, something has to be done sometimes. Since two thousand and five, two thousand and five, that's when Mayor Garner was, was, was the mayor of the village from nineteen eighty-nine to two thousand and five, that's sixteen years. In those sixteen years, there was development, there's still buildings that stand now that we all use, we all use pet boys, we all use Home Depot, we all use these buildings. And it's, it's ironic and it's funny to me that, you know, we have people speaking about this administration, what this administration has not done. Then you had a twelve-year timeframe, twelve years, well, absolutely, nothing was built in the village of Hempstead. Not one building of significance in twelve long years. Now, you have a new administration, and the last three years, nothing has been built, no development, no signs of development, in the last three years. Two of the trustees that are speaking, I have respect for the trustees, but you guys have been on the board for the past two years. Trustee Daniels is, is a person that I consider to have. Trustee Daniels is a person that I consider to have business acumen, and knows real estate, knows business, and has worked with some prestigious companies, and he knows what. The problem I have is, no one has stepped forward, people have relationships with developers, people know developers, people know different people that they should bring to the table, so we can get something done. The request has been made several times, I have spoken to all the trustees and the mayor about development, and what are we gonna do? Hempstead should be like the Nile, the River Nile, it's the, what's, what's on the boundaries of the Nile should be rich. When you have a bus station, you have a train station, you have close proximity to the Southern State Parkway, Nor, Northern State Parkway, Long Island Expressway, we're in the perfect area, we have the location. But we have done nothing since two thousand and five. People could deny it, and one of the slogans from that timeframe was, results you can see. But there has been no results since two thousand and five. So, I understand the coronavirus, that's one thing, we're not gonna use that as a, an excuse not to start planning and not to start getting something done, because we, we can't just wait for a miracle, a miracle is not gonna happen. So, I'm not saying I'm pro or con for anything, but I can say that the two people that's on this docket, that's docketed, have shown results, and no one can deny that. So, I, I don't know if, if people don't wanna see any progress, because there is an election, unless in a year. I don't know if people wanna hold back and not do anything to, to move Hempstead forward right now. And I don't even like to use the move forward terminology, but to move Hempstead forward to progress, are people trying to stop progress, or people not using the abilities they have to reach out to people and bring people to the table? The developers should be brought to the table. And they came to the table maybe once or twice, and it's been almost two years with no discussion, and nothing's going on. And people have relationships, they can reach these people, they know how it works, they speak the language, that means they know what's going on, they know how this thing works, they know about the numbers. So, let's get something done, instead of saying, complaining, and, and blaming and pointing fingers, everyone has to admit that no one is doing anything, there's nothing to be done, and that's the bottom line. So, I'm kinda, we have to do something. And this is starting, fifteen thousand dollars is chump change compared to some of the other agreements we made with other people. So, we, we're not gonna make like fifteen thousand dollars, and talking about sanitation workers and things of that nature. Fifteen thousand dollars is chump change, and we have to start bringing incoming to this village, we have to bring this village back. We have to do something, we can't just keep waiting, pointing fingers, and waiting till election time, and wanting, and worrying who's gonna get credit for making Hempstead a better place. So, it's, it's our job, it's everybody that's sitting at the dais, and I'm sitting down here, it's our job to get something done. Not to argue, not to try to make someone else look bad, the bottom line is, and I'm gonna say it again, since two thousand and five, name one building, name one development, name anything positive that's happened to Hempstead. So, I, I want any, anyone that's, to answer that question, what has been done since two thousand and five, if anything? Can I just get that answer, please, from anyone that?
Well, not enough, but I guess a double bus would be one of the answers.
That's not, that's not the vote, that's, that's not.
That's not, that's not. Limit what type of development.
That's not, that's not getting anything done.
Well, that's not, that's argumentative as to whether that's the case or not, but that's an answer to your question.
You know what's embarrassing about this whole thing? Is that we all grew up here in Hempstead. All of us, I think, uh, Mayor Ryan, I has been here probably longer than anybody, before you guys was born. But here's the thing, to sit here and talk about nothing has been done since two thousand and five in this village, not, no, no, no.
I didn't say nothing.
No, to say that nothing has been done in this village since two thousand and five, it is correct. It is embarrassing, that we all sit here, majorities or minorities, and continually to throw dirt on each other, I think that's even more embarrassing. If there is something that we can do, or an idea that you have that's better than mine, please let me know, so that we can move forward in this village, so that we can get something done. So I am not looking to, to, uh, to throw anybody in the bus. But the thing of it is, we have to learn how to work together, uh, with the time left that we have, work, to work together, to work together, so that we can all come to one agreement, to, to some conclusion, that will help not only myself, but the entire community here. Listen, I'll be older in another couple, another month, I'm not gonna tell you how old. But it is time now that we are to move, that we can move forward, get something done, working together as a collective group here, that we might be able to see Hempstead move forward while we are still here. This virus is, is taking a toll on all of us, and I understand, but it's not the end of the world, not yet. So I think that we should come together, not only with the mayor, but the trustees and the community, and make a move here, make a move here. Uh, trustee Johnson is correct, we've been here three, like, three years already, a little over three years, and we haven't done anything. We haven't done anything, except go back and forth about oops this and oops that, and I think it's time that we might move forward.
Right, I'm, I just, I would like to say that, um, when the statement is made, you know, coronavirus, whatever, if anybody sitting here do not understand that this coronavirus, this pandemic is going to have an economic effect, not only in America, but in the village of Hempstead, you are misinformed, this coronavirus will have an economic impact. And so, again, that is my question, we have to consider that, because it is gonna have an economic effect.
I don't think that anybody here that thinks that's gonna have an effect on the village and the entire world, or that.
Well, no, the statement was made, you know, don't say about coronavirus, and, and as a matter of fact, uh, the President of the United States also, uh, was misinformed about the impact that this coronavirus is gonna have.
And if you, and if you sit back and do nothing, nothing's gonna change, and it's not gonna get better.
And, and you, listen, I'm not arguing with that.
Sit back, twelve years, it was twelve years of promises that were not kept, twelve years.
I'm not talking about twelve years, I'm talking about right now.
I'm speaking now, I'm speaking now, it was twelve years of promises not kept, of what Hempstead could be, and what Hempstead would be, and then not being a difference from when you drove into Rockville Center, down South Franklin, and when you came back, and when you went from North Franklin into Garda City and came back, twelve years, and absolutely, nothing changed. And it, it could be argument that, that our future was mortgage away during those twelve years, as far as these parking lots. That's why we're in this conundrum now, because the parking lots were given away, our most, property is something, land is something that, there's not gonna be more land, you can't produce more land, and the land was given away. That's the bottom line, so that's why we're in a conundrum, that's why we have to try to sue or fight to get it back, because it was given away. And it was given away by a contract, so we have to fight to get it back. That's why we, that's why we have a problem now with developing things of that nature, because of bad, bad decisions that were made.
Uh, listen, you don't have an argument with me.
Bad decision that was made, where they gave away, every parking lot of significance was given away.
My point again.
This is which we're in.
My point again is, when we make a statement saying that, or implying that the coronavirus has nothing to do with the discussion, it has everything to do with the discussion today, and my question again is, that we have to consider the economic impact that this is gonna have before we do anything. Let's see how this is going to impact us economically, so we can make wise decisions moving forward.
Fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand dollars.
I think we've probably had comments.
It will make a difference.
I just, I think trustee Daniels needs to have a vote, so he can participate in that, he has another meeting to attend, can we move to vote, please?
Sitting back and hoping is a problem.
Sitting back and hoping is a problem.
Move to vote, please.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hogg?
No.
Trustee Daniels? Give me a moment, he's, remember he had another meeting?
No.
Trustee Daniels said no, trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Vote pass, motion passed.
Yep, hundred percent, uh, thanks everybody for pointing, um, I'll just ask everyone to mute their line if you want, um, at a time.
Trustee, trustee Daniels, trustee Daniels.
You mute him.
Mute him.
Mute him.
We'll go ahead and jump in, first and foremost, I'd like to thank everyone for, for joining, we truly, truly value the longstanding relationship.
This is not.
Across the entire. And, uh, and being asked to participate.
Okay, just go ahead and, six, please.
I'm gonna have to hear him on item six. I just couldn't hear him.
You couldn't hear him?
No.
You got two in the spring now. Who did item six earlier? On item sixty-two? You want to mute that already?
No, number six is different, it's the PVA contract.
Oh, the contract, I'm sorry.
You want me to mute item six? Okay, I got it, I found how to mute him, okay.
I'll get my salt lake city to.
Okay, I muted him.
Trustee Daniels still with it?
Trustee Daniels is unmuted now.
He's unmuted?
No, I had to put him on mute.
Okay, alright.
Okay, so everyone else who's still hearing me that's in the chat, this, um, okay. Item number six, resolve that upon the recommendation of Sherry's Vanderhold, village attorney, that the board of trustees hereby approves stipulation of agreement between the village of Hempstead and the PVA regarding attempted agreement.
Additionally, with us today is also Michael McRoberts.
You got him, you got him.
Head of agency lending.
The host could really trick the person off the chair.
And with us to give us. That is what's going on.
Okay, he's gonna have to vote. Okay. Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
No, you don't have a, oh, I need a motion.
Move, second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hogg?
Yes.
Beginning of all.
Trustee Daniels?
And what we've been trying to do.
He's in a different.
Okay, he's, he's.
He's in a different meeting.
So what do you all want me to do? Just take.
Exactly, one, two, three, one.
Okay. Okay, so now he's added a meeting effective item number six. Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Item number seven, resolve that upon the recommendation of Gary Woo, deputy village controller, the board of trustees approves to settle the workers' compensation claim in a total amount of forty thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-five cents, we've added five.
Move, second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hogg?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Joe Gill, village controller, the board of trustees approves the tentative budget for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, on which a public hearing was held on Tuesday, April twenty, two thousand and twenty, with a tax rate of eighty-five dollars and thirteen, per one hundred dollars of assessed value and sanitation user fees for fiscal year twenty twenty.
We, we, you passed on. Item eight passed there. We just approved seven, now we got a similar in number eight.
Yeah, that.
Okay.
That's another.
I will go back to number eight.
Yes.
I'm gonna finish number nine. Yes, 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 Joe?
On, on number nine, effective by law, the modified budget is the adopted budget of the village, as of May one. So if there's no changes, they can just. the village as of May one, so if there's no changes, they can, they can still vote on it, but the tentative budget automatically becomes the adopted budget if it's not voted on before May first.
Okay, so how would you like for me to word that?
Well, they, they can, I guess ratified that this is the adopted budget.
Ratified? So the wording is fine? That's all?
The first, uh, the, the board of trustees ratified tentative budget.
Okay, okay, so I'm going to start, okay, so I'm going to go back to number nine, and then I'll go to number eight.
Okay.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Joe Gill, village controller, the board of trustees ratifies the tentative budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, on which a public hearing was held on Tuesday, April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty, with a tax rate of eighty-five dollars and thirteen cents per one hundred assessed value and sanitation user fees for fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty-one. A copy of the budget book is available at the village of Hempstead website, villageofhempstead.org, under the accounting department.
So move. Second question. Uh, uh, Joe, can you hear me?
Yes.
Is there any way we can put it as resolution with no increase, with no tax increase, and no cost to, uh? Yeah, I see.
You, you can say that you add it to the motion, that you're approving the tentative budget that includes no tax levy increase, no increase in the sanitation fee.
Right.
I would think the mayor might want to do a, a, a public press release, a beacon regarding the.
To say that? Put it in a beacon?
P.O.
Okay, Joe, so Joe is suggesting to put it in a beacon?
That you do a press release.
Yeah, well, I'll give it to the P.O.
Okay.
Okay, alright.
Okay, trustee Johnson?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Trustee Hogs?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Item number nine?
That was not.
That was not.
I mean eight, sorry. Resolve that upon the recommendation of Gary Wu, deputy village controller, the board of trustees approves to settle the workman's compensation claim in a total amount of forty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars be ratified.
Move.
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hogs?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
I have two addendums. Wait, did you do?
Wait, we have number ten.
The water rate, okay, water rate. Oh, that's this one, yeah. Number ten, resolve that upon the recommendation of Joe Gill, village controller, the board of trustees approves the water rates for the fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, on the public hearing which was held on Tuesday, April twenty-eighth.
So move. Second?
Add the resolution that there is no change in the rates?
Right, that's what I was going to say.
No change in the rates?
Yes.
We can move, we're going to withdraw that motion and add no change in the rates at the ending of the date?
Right.
So I need a motion?
Move.
Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hogs?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
I have two addendums.
We're on eleven.
Yeah, that comes last.
That comes last.
Okay.
Addendum item number one, resolve that upon the recommendation of Mayor Ryan that the village of Hempstead accepts a monetary donation of ten thousand dollars from Winters Chapel International, New York, located at three ten Fulton Avenue, Hempstead, New York, one one five five zero, for overcoming the coronavirus pandemic.
For overcoming?
Yes, to fight. I need a motion?
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hogs?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Addendum item number two, resolve that upon the recommendation of Mayor Ryan that the regular scheduled village board of trustees meeting on Tuesday, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, time to be changed to twelve noon with no public participation.
So move.
I need a second. I need a second motion?
I'll second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hogs?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Resolve that upon the recommendation of Joe Gill, village treasurer, all meeting bills ordered by the board of trustees on check warrant, May fifth, two thousand and twenty, be approved as previously reviewed.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hogs?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
That now closes the meeting for May fifth, two thousand and twenty.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So move. Second.
Trustee Johnson?
Yes.
Trustee Hogs?
Yes.
Trustee Renfro?
Yes.
Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
Good day all, and be well and be safe. Next board meeting will be Tuesday, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, at twelve noon.